There was some dispute about whether the county was going to apply for a license. And the plan was saying there is no license in Congress. It's introducing lawful money to be taken and people drop down dollars as well. It would then, uh, everybody's cost. This, this paragraph one would, uh, change you back to the office of life view. And we're not looking at paragraph one with the office of life, that the nation was going to take possession of, like, dredging, removing all possible, since 2000. Uh, we want to amend the state of the bargain actually, when the county, they were not, it's not in the main issue. Uh, and some of the documents that they found, appears that this, this property was said, or had taken person, was said in print. Uh, Mr. Stan Lawes is telling us here, supporting me, that he has documents that show that that settlement is irrelevant, and that it eventually doesn't still belong to the city of Yellington. What I would say to you is, uh, as we don't have talked about this, then, uh, the main thing from those things here, it may be, um, kind of, by the law. But if you want to make a call for this, uh, my suggestion is to, uh, let's say, we put it in form of this agreement, we have to understand that if, if this makes this court, uh, absolutely fine, um, confirm the ownership of the property, uh, that, that we can come back and use it, uh, at a later time. I don't like to do this, and I don't really want this to be given to the president, because I like for you to see the documents you found and form, and this may be just talk about this process. But we need to have an understanding that you really want, really to authorize, maybe let's sign this document, and if we maybe make the review, we should, we should come back and move out of the public.
Is that something that needs to be in the motion, though?
I don't think necessarily needs to be in the motion, but, but, uh, something needs to be understood, that could happen, and I'm not sure it will. Maybe this file, ladies, was the basis in, uh, paragraph one, that we sent the office to, 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 to buy the market.
How long?
Well, it's not, it's gonna take very long, and we probably, you know, that, exactly three. But we didn't have the documents to fill the vast amount of room that we could, could use, to try to determine, and buy in, to, to, uh, to.
Any more discussions, everybody okay to go?
Mr. Chairman, I mean, just, I think that, given the time, that you're not likely to play ball on that thing this year, um, I think we ought to wait until we have the documentation in order before we vote. That's my, just my personal slam on it.
Anyone else who's got a motion on the floor? To approve, to go forward, you think?
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm, I was all been over that, there's some, some firms and things in here, as far as at least, and I know Joe looked at it, but I've not had an opportunity to really look at it, so, the liability, before I might have looked at, you know, a little further. If they started, you know, today, it's gonna be six, eight months before it's ready to do anything wrong.
But I'm, I'm, but I, I'm, 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 I just wanna say, I'm, I'm by no means against that, though, I, I want that to happen, but I think we should wait for paperwork, for the lease agreement to be buttoned up, sewed up, before we vote.
Okay, go ahead, Tom, let's wrap up this discussion.
I, I agree with Bobble here, can we, do we need to amend the motion to table it, or can we just table the motion until next month, to get the documents in order?
Just vote it down?
Okay.
Well, there's your preferences, anyone else? Let's put this to vote. voting on going forward with authorization.
I want to hear that. Beverly, just be, Beverly, just.
Not in real life.
Yeah, not that, that's right.
Sorry, I think it's that guy here, you should have to check or something.
You're trying to check or something?
Don't worry about that, there.
Well, there's your preferences, anyone else? Let's put this to vote. voting on going forward with authorization.
All right, now, barely, uh, Matt, uh, you're back in the house.
Should we vote him back on the board?
Now, we're ready to vote again.
It's got me out now.
Let's, uh, the, uh, what we can do is, uh,
Call roll.
Wait, roll call vote.
Call roll.
Just wait a second till we get the, uh, till we say vote, before you vote, okay? Everybody says, cause now, when I'm gonna get ready, now, go ahead and, Scott, we've got a check in.
Yes, you confirmed, Scott.
They let you do that, Scott?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
I wasn't saying that. We're not in discussion mode.
Yeah, gotta be in discussion mode. All right, now, Scott, let's make sure everybody's in, they're supposed to be in, absent fruit, absent barriers, absent evidence, correct? Now, we're ready to vote.
Voting on the motion.
Addison just, Mayor's no, Mayor's no, Davis just, Paul no, Pat Mucker no, Man's no, Oris just, Bruce for just, Single yes, St. Phil no, Walden no, and White yes.
Motion. Sir, Chairman, before you move on to the next, I have one question, and I have this quite a question. The document that we were seeing, uh, from Yellington, had a statement here by, uh, for the Board of Education. Does the Board of Education, uh, do anything at all to be, uh, open?
They do, they do, it's hard.
I also tried to, about next meeting, I had to get everything timed with employees, I think, uh, specifically, uh, they're, 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 they're,[1082.83]
That's the best we can do tonight?
Well, what we have to do, uh, is, where the cooperation, if the permit holder, if there'll be a new application made, uh, the permit holder will come in, deny the, 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 the...
But even if they were here, we still didn't do it. So, yes, go back to committee, we can...
Right.
Commissioner Ayers?
I just have a question we're asking, because I'm not familiar with this. When you issue, you issue a license, is it for the person or the location? The person. At a specific location? And does she sell or lease it to this...
He's got some alimony deal. He has a alimony deal. He always has a deal, and he has, she owns the alimony.
What, did he lease or purchase?
He leased it to Matty and I, off of, in game, uh, from, period.
So Sue, you'll take this to committee, right?
Okay. And I have one more, for you, and we have ten hours to do it. And, uh, issued the previous, uh, beer permit had a, you must have considered your options in order to be issued a beer permit. And there's someone in office that's fighting to the man. That's a challenge.
Well, I mean, again, I'm, I'm reading from the manual, and I don't care if the code section here before, and they said, the state law establishes the requirements that applicants are due for their work, their business, and their wishes. And county, they not impose any additional requirements. Applicants can meet all of the requirements, positions, if they will. Most things fifty, fifty. And, and, uh, that fifty seven five one oh five, so if that code section says that it has to, uh, somebody to read it. I think it's a driver's license, uh, that, that is why. I, I don't see the problem with that.
I'm, I'm not sure it does, the previous beer permit, okay, county regulations, and the state has been met, because they make you a place in the county. And, if you wanna have a place in the county, most people would come and see that, possibly require that you see my...
Well, you're not required to handle license, unless you're operating, probably. Uh, but I, I would say, you know, the fifty seven five one oh five would answer that question.
So this has been referred to committee at this point? Commissioner Ayers, uh, Mr. Corner?
I apologize that we do not have a Commissioner's Corner. I'm out of ideas and I've been...
Mr. Bird, did you have anything? Mr. Bush not here, Mr. Davis anything? And Mr. Hall?
What I had on there, I'm gonna take it off, because I think it's a hundred different. I mentioned terms for that. And what I would like to bring up, which I missed earlier, was in the plan commission, main commission, by my, maybe it's a big preparation.
I would, I would see a problem. The bird didn't pass, but it could go back. I don't see anything we can do at that point, you're done? You know, maybe, you know. We can't, but this is the information, we can do...
Well, it just had voters, it's taken, they, they corrected it in the plan commission, they called it, but it's, I'll leave it slide for you. It was, uh, how the vote was voted on, and it's got Paul and Norwood, Fisher State, Paul and Bird. That's all.
Mr. Hatmaker, did you have anything on the agenda?
I did, um... We had a, I was gonna ask for an update on the industrial recruiter from the mayor's office. Do we have anything on that yet? I also had, um, need to make one announcement. We're having a town hall meeting on three, on March twenty seventh at six P.M. at, we'll call it City Hall. And, I guess because this wasn't on the agenda, I'll have to make a motion to suspend the rules to... So that we can, it, pretty much the same thing you all had, just get the ball rolling on this.
Some consideration of what, um...
It'd be some property located out at, at, uh, Mount Earn for Jacksboro Station Bridge.
Motion, Hatmaker, second floor, suspension of rule, we're voting on suspension. You, please. Voting on suspension rule.
Ashton, Ed, Mayor's no, Bear's no, Davis yes, Paul yes, Hatmaker yes, Manes yes, Oris yes, Rupert for yes, Single yes, Stankill yes, Walden yes, and White yes.
Motion passed, please, you'll have the motion, then.
Okay, so what this is, is we got an individual named Don Satter who lives in Florida, and he's bought the house that joins... That's right, Nashville, I'm sorry. And Rusty and Scott both are aware of this. It joins the bridge at Jacksboro Station. The county owns, when they, when they built the bridge, they bought so much of that property out there, and it goes over into his yard. He's interested in buying part of this property back, and he'll give him the room to build a garage that he's wanting to build on the property. Two things, it, it puts it back over on the tax roll, and we start getting some taxes off of it, and it accommodates him, to get him back here. So he's actually gonna be paying, not just on the house, but additional property. So what I was wanting to do is just to get it into your hands, Joe, and get, try and get the ball rolling on this if we get, get approval from the committee or from the commission. Need to make a motion to surplus the property.
Yeah, I, I... In order to, for, for, we, we, we'll have to put that property to the second office again, due to the private delegation that that felt it has to be offered either L.A., seal bid, or the sale, or an option, and play the bridge to design, which one may be preferred.
You don't make that one? No, go ahead, Rust.
I make a motion that we, we actually, the property that in question next to the, um, Jacksboro Station Bridge, I don't know what we even call it out there, I guess that's what we call it. Uh, that property's in question, that it be surplus property. Dennis has done looked at it, and it's gonna have to be surveyed and laid out, and we put it as surplus to be sold, um, at a... Not a public auction, it's sealed bid. But maybe, maybe some other, go ahead, make the second one to somebody, and I'll say something else.
I'll say...
This property actually belonged to his family. The county bought it, he ended up, up, back with, and he's front of him, and he's not just moving, he's actually moving back. I think it's his mother's or her mother's property.
Mother's.
And, uh, he just wants to pick enough place, and we'll let him get off the road. And get it, they are enough there, you know about Scotty?
People built a garage.
And it still gives us enough access to get it, to put it back on the tax roll. It's hard for them to get in and out without getting the traffic too slow, to alleviate that.
Steep driveway.
It's dangerous for the location of it. When you get property like that, the school board's been doing it, the life school bid, putting, trying to, to cook this property's reverted back home, and put it back on the tax roll. And we need to try to do that, too, and say something like this. Nothing easy to get. Any bridge is over twenty foot long, it has to be stayed as fast as you can, and you have to get it. And so, what we're, and by doing that, that'll put it back on the county's roll. Mayor's gonna have to do a lot of work on it, and they're gonna have to be surveying it.
Motion on the floor, and the motion... Let's go on the floor.
Here, for the bird, uh, once the process includes itself, and the property is ready to bend and put up for sale, if you include somebody, somebody to double sign, so we can easily, uh, solicit, propose, and get the chase down, try to figure out when they can do that process.
So move on, Rust, can you get the view coming? Someone else? Voting on the motion.
Any old board, you'll take it?
You didn't check out, so like, why?
I would assume he's gonna... It's not debut.
Okay, uh, somebody, Mac, no, I would confirm.
I would confirm.
Yeah, I would confirm. All right, we do. Now, we're ready, voting back on the vote.
Now, she go.
Mayor's yes, Bear's no, Davis yes, Paul yes, Hatmaker yes, Manes yes, Oris yes, Rupert for yes, Single yes, Stankill yes, Walden yes, and White yes.
Motion passes. Sue, you have anything on the agenda?
No, I don't.
Rusty, does he?
I have two things, uh, just jail committee.
Wait, wait, excuse me. One, we have the beer board meeting, the third year, at, um, I mean, twenty six, something, twenty six, uh, five thirty.
It's okay. Uh, jail committee met Thursday evening, and, uh, we actually had a meeting prior to that, it was just an information meeting, and just a few attended with, uh, Bob Bass, with the county corrections coordinator for TCI. And it was actually, wanted to get this started, and kicked off with the commission, and mayors across the state, to bring them more up on what's going on in the county jails. Uh, it's more of the information purposes, and let us know what we need to be at, where we need to be at. The committee gave a recommendation back, uh, to the commission to put the jail committee on this committee. And I want to make that into a motion, that we adopt this committee into the jail committee. It says, uh... Give me a second, I'll give you the name. I had it in front of me, I thought...
I think it's correct.
It's, yeah. County correction partnership, incentive committee. County correction partnership, incentive committee.
Motion, second by hands. Do the sketch. Voting on the motion.
If he hadn't cast his vote, he would make the, the light button, Mac, and then confirm it, he would have voted.
Uh, one other thing, David, did you ever find out about the rideaway on Cove Lake?
Let's do this, let's vote.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, first.
That's all.
Mayor's yes, Bear's no, Davis yes, Paul yes, Hatmaker yes, Manes yes, Oris yes, Rupert for yes, Single yes, Stankill yes, Walden yes, and White yes.
Motion passes.
Have you heard anything about the, uh, clerk of the rideaway for Cove Lake that we presented to the state back in November? Heard anything back from T.D.O. on that? You have? Great.
I went to the chamber meeting. And then we have A.T., Baker, and Dennis Powers, who's there.
Friday?
Yeah, I think it's Friday, I'm in for tea. And they said she'd get, since it was in the county, it's terrible, to get terrible mayor to just write a letter requesting that for the state, and that it would be done.
I'll, I'll do that. Looks like they told us back in November at the time, 'cause that's a picture. When you open that up, that's a picture.
It was a tourism discussion, is what we were at the chamber about.
I appreciate you finding out, but I'll, I'll get ahold of Stooksbury tomorrow. That's all I have.
Okay, Steve, go ahead, I don't have nothing. Scott, you have anything on you?
No.
Uh, well, you have anything on the agenda? Of what? Nothing on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, oh, you make one, Mr. Chairman. Okay, uh, two things I wanna, uh, make aware of, so... We were having a trouble with our votes a minute ago. That's because the member was trying to cast a no vote before we got into vote mode, and we were in discussion. And what that does is it makes them ask, just like we just did with, uh, Mr. Ags. So you have to be careful, wait till it says we're ready to vote, before you start down the measure. But, second thing I want to point out to you, by next month's meeting, see the monitoring, Terry, how much lower it is, and then the one in front of, uh, Mary. All right, that, I've been working, and I got that, uh, mount in, uh, Wednesday, this past week. I'll have all the mounts changed over by next meeting, so that everybody will be able to see a crawl, for a monitor, and not be...
There is a signal rating.
There is the capability...
Because that would say Mary, Paul, and people. Is that clear?
Uh, there, that is true, that you would not have a full vote for your tape, which is the reason that I, I understood that we were... I understand, my understanding was that you wanted to have something for a tape, which is the reason, how, there is the ability to print out, is I understand it. But until they get their bug corrected in their software, or the tiebreaker thing comes in, we'll have to continue this, because now it says simple majority, and you can have a high vote for, and a low vote, and that's supposed to... And they're working on it. So until we get that revised, we won't be able to do it. And then at that point, if you no longer need, it would be audible on the tape, then it's... I understand? Are we in, uh, voting?
We are.